We will halt conversation on this right now and we will move into the public hearing. By fifteen, to your comments regarding the draft of the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight, Iowa capo improved.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chair members of board. Um, you have a short presentation I'd like to give you, like I do every year. It looks like Scott's bringing it up for us now.
I'll let you control things there.
We did put notice in the Oatana people's press that we can hold a public hearing tonight. It's been on our website for a couple of weeks. So I do every year, we'll just run through this as quickly as possible. So yes, this is the public hearing. Or well, I should say, this is. Because you have to open the public hearing. So when I'm done with the presentation, we'll open the public hearing. There we go. As some background, our annual funding for construction, um, about three point eight million dollars of state aid, which regular construction is outside of the small municipality. And we get about three hundred fifty thousand a year for construction within the small municipality, which is classified as a city of five thousand or less population. Our sales tax revenues are running about three and a half million a year. Um, and in order to amend the use of the sales tax, this public hearing is required. Maintenance overlays, we put about one point three million of state maintenance dollars into annually. Uh, real estate, around three quarters of a million. And our state bridge funds and township bridge funds vary every year depending on if there's bridges ready to go and if there's state bridge bonding money available. So our revenue side is just under ten million annually. Some more background information, our average pavement condition, Minna comes in and rates our pavements every other year. The green is our county road system, uh, and the blue is the county state aid system. The red being the total of the two. You'll notice the green is coming down a little tiny bit. In about two thousand ten, the county bonded and paved, um, a number of miles, which I don't have off the top of my head, of straight county road because they didn't have other money sources to do that. So they bonded. So we're about thirteen years later, um, we're expecting to see some downward movement on those pavements. But, you know, we do, uh, like I said, we rate them every other year and we incorporate, uh, when an overlay is required into the program and it's really guided by this information. So, um, as you see, our state aid system is still on the upward climb. And I'd say again, you know, the, the upward movement started shortly after the county board implemented the ordinance and sales tax in the county. So it's definitely, um, drawn to good purpose. This is kind of the total system, looking at where the pavements are percentage-wise, in which category. Uh, the ratings are from zero to one hundred and the fair condition starts around the sixty. And good is, uh, well, seventy-five to eighty, and the very good is above that. Um, you know, because of the county system, we see a slight dip, uh, into good and very good categories, but still more than ninety percent of our pavements are, are fair, uh, good or very good. So we're in pretty good shape there. And the pavement conditions drive a lot of the program dollars into the pavement rehab projects. Um, our, our draft plan includes a map, you know, for a quick visual of, um, where the projects are located at one time. You can't see it very well here, but, uh, on the online version comes out every night. But, uh, I'll jump in. I generally just cover the following calendar year because, right, we come back every year. Twenty twenty-four projects are the ones that if you incorporate into the budget, that you'll adopt in, uh, next month. So we don't have any reconstruction projects programmed for next year or for reconstruction. So we'll start out with our pavement rehab projects that we're proposing, um, which is Casat Twelve and Twenty-three up on the west side of the city of Metford, kind of out in front of the Metford Mall and up to, um, the corner that starts heading west on Twenty-three. Those, uh, pavements are falling. Our, we're looking at the roundabouts, the metro roundabouts, because those are our responsibility for pavement maintenance there. Um, but it presents some complexities that we can work through with Minna. We'll probably include it since we were here. And then Casat Thirty-seven is, um, east-west route on the east side of the county. Last year, we did, uh, a lot of culvert, uh, film drainage rehab, but replaced a lot of the centerline culverts out there, getting it ready for the pavement rehab project. So that will go next spring. Operational and safety improvement projects. We have a highway safety improvement program, uh, project rural intersection lighting. These intersections were identified in our county road safety plan from twenty twelve. They're, um, what are classified as priority intersections. So they looked at a number of criteria, um, to identify these locations. Number of crashes were one of those criteria. So thirty-six intersections are currently proposed to hit, uh, rural intersection lighting. Casat Two or Bachman Drive at Interstate Thirty-five. The signal maintenance project, we have a local partnership program project with Minna. They'll be paying a good portion of this project. Glorified maintenance will paint the system, which hasn't been painted since it was installed. And we're, uh, we'll do some other minor maintenance things. And we're adding battery backup systems to this, uh, this signal system, which doesn't have it. And then our, uh, stop thirty-four, which is also Twenty-six Street at Landmark Drive. We've been talking about media modifications there for a few years now. And we think this is the year that we'll get that done. I referred to drainage rehab projects previously, but again, we'll go in. And, uh, on Twenty-three between Casat Thirty-four, which is Twenty-six Street up to our Casat Twelve, we're actually going to, uh, try culvert lining. They have an infrared technology that, uh, you push the liner in, you secure it with the infrared, and it's got, um, great strength and a number of our neighboring counties have been using it very good, uh, success. So we're going to give that a try. And Casat Twenty-eight down by Beaver Lake, um, we're going to. Reconstruction and pavement rehab is in the further out years. So we're going to go in and replace our culverts on that central road next year.
Craig, back to, uh, I think it was Landmark Drive? The previous slide? Is that, that's Twenty-six Street?
Um, Casat Thirty-four is Twenty-six Street. So it's the quick-trip intersection.
So is there, I think we type out some media sidewalk possibly at some point?
If the city wants to incorporate that into that project, I think we could probably work with them to do that.
Craig, is that a minor work on concrete and metal culvert?
Yes. Generally, the, um, the concrete, you know, is the seams that will start to grow. So it's not so much the strength there, but in the steel culverts that grow, it's definitely the strength we're looking for. And then the last drainage project would be Casat Forty-three on the, um, east, east side, between Compact Fourteen and Casat Eight, getting that ready for a pavement rehab, either in Twenty-five or Twenty-six. Our bridge replacements next year, we have funding in place for, uh, seven-four five-six-two, which is listed here on County Road Sixty-two over Crane Creek, which is a posted timber structure, so we'll be glad to get that out of there. And then pending, uh, state bridge bonding, we have one on Casat Six and one on Casat Twenty-eight. A lot on Twenty-eight is just south of the Beaver Lake curves. Then, uh, if we have enough town bridge funding, we'll get, uh, the next two in, which are on the north side of the county. Yeah, town bridge funding is, uh, it's either there or it's not. And so it's kind of like pretty fun. Um, our overlay project for next year will be on Casai from Casat Seventy-seven, which we renumbered this year, so that used to be Thirty-four. And then to Casat Twelve, um, the, uh, maintenance staff has been doing a lot of top old patching on that section for years. Our, our total construction for twenty twenty-four is just over twelve million. And the difference between that and the revenues we've got generally comes out either of the, um, sales tax fund balance or the, um, I don't have an issue with what we call the road and bridge fund balance. They both go into the fund balance, but sales tax specifically, um, has to be accounted for. It's its own, uh, funding up, it can only be used on construction projects. The other fund, um, balance is kind of out of the general budget. Any budget savings we have, any project savings, kind of things. That two million six is probably a combination of both of those, um, not both of those things. Looking ahead to twenty twenty-five beyond the end of program, you know, Casat Twenty-eight reconstruction down there through the park. We're coming up. Of course, the big one, East Side Corridor, um, you know, last year at this time, they're looking to maybe start construction in twenty twenty-five. The new program you see shows it starting in twenty twenty-six. Everything takes longer than we ever expect. Casat Forty-eight, which is Main Street, Oatana, you know, we've wrapped up feasibility study there. Talking with the city, um, it's probably a little further out, twenty twenty-seven construction, when they take them forward to do with the test of the project. And then, um, hopefully within next year or so, we'll start feasibility study of Forty-three, a county road one-eighty intersection, which is the Havana intersection out there. That's our highest crash rate intersection. So we want to come up with a solution to address those crashes and then implement it. It won't be too far beyond twenty twenty-five.
That needs to be prioritized. That's a tough area. We need to address that.
And then another one would be.
Yeah, that's a mess.
The last one shown there is the county road one-eighty bridges at the railroad in Isaac Walt Creek. Because of that material and structure under one-eighty, we've had feasibility studies going on at that one as well. And then, uh, future considerations, still just kind of keep it on our radar as we got the north and west bell lines of, uh, probably more development-driven, um, up there in the northwest part of the city. Casat Twenty-three realignment around the hospital. And then if you drive off and, uh, the concrete pavements out there are getting into a tough shape. So we'll want to look at that corridor and figure out what we want to do. And then, yeah, we talked about open cedar for a while, um, probably. Those will probably start getting on the radar a little more, so here in the next few years.
So in what respect?
As the pavements start to.
So just to rehab of what's currently there, not change the configuration or?
Well, I would say we probably end up doing feasibility studies to say, you know, this is what we've got. What should it be? Will it fall public? What engagement? And I particularly think of Bachman out there that goes, you know, last winter, the trunk highway that Minna came in, made a four-lane divided highway, all the way out, sort of nine, you know. That's not supported today by traffic. So that'd be something we want to look at is, um, how do I get on there? What's the section we want? Do we want a three-lane, five-lane, divided highway, hardway? You know, there's lots of, you know. Change to reconstruct, just what's out there today on Bachman, I think, will cost a lot of money for me to kind of be over built. Yeah, at the end of the public hearing, though, if you want to reemphasize any, any, uh, spoken comments, you can fill our comment board or you can send us comments at our, uh, Highway email address or give a call. If you can take any, um, quick case of, uh, and Scott? Well, during the public hearing, he'll read some of them.
That concludes our today.
Questions? Now we will open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight highway plan. And, uh, I will reiterate a message from the public comment period so everybody understands what that's about. Those wishing to speak must state their name and address for the record. After they're acknowledged by the board chair, each person will be limited to two minutes to make his or her comments. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. The board may not take action on an item presented during the public comment period unless the item has already been mentioned on the agenda for action. When appropriate, the board may refer inquiries and items brought up during the public comment period to the county administrator for follow-up. And we would appreciate you coming up to the podium with the microphone so we can pick it up. So it'll all be recorded tonight, that will all be on public record. So those who, anybody wishing to make public comment tonight?
Good evening, Matt Senate, twenty-five nineteen Stony Creek Drive. Here to talk about the East Side Corridor project, which has been proposed at Twenty-ninth Avenue, which is alongside a fully developed neighborhood on the south end, north sides. When I think of Oatana, I think of families, safe, great town to raise kids in, parks, nature, beauty, a growing town with charm, as you can see in downtown areas, beautiful, and some of the amenities we've had in recent years. Which is why it's appalling that the city and county would embark on adventure together to take a plan that was abandoned over twenty years ago because it was too close to existing residences and was decommissioned and bring that back twenty years later and try to put it on a street that has since been designated, a route that's since been designated as a residential street. Again, this is twenty years later, we're trying to impart this, this highway. What's changed? A neighborhood of a hundred fifty homes has been built in this area. This, this didn't exist even twenty years ago when the plan was abandoned. That's the most significant change. And so I think about that and how this violates many of the different things I enjoy about Oatana, and I think many others do too, families. Is this safe for families? Is this safe for kids? Does it impart beauty? Does it give the town charm, especially when maybe we need to put a noise wall in there to evade the safety and noise concerns? Oatana residents deserve better. If a highway is landlocked against neighborhoods like this, you can't zone for commercial. And we need a lot of amenities out there that we don't currently have today. Thirty-fourth Avenue is just a half mile down the road, allows for all proper zoning, some light commercial, grocery store, gas stations, some things that we desire in that end of town. Building a highway alongside a residential area like this and landlocking it is short-sighted and will set Oatana back decades because the funds for this road will not be able to be used for Thirty-fourth in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Anybody else wishing to make public comment on the highway?
Well, this is everyone, twenty-five twenty-five, Stony Creek Drive. Um, as an existing resident, I have concerns about the East Side Corridor in this plan. Firstly, safety. A highway three feet from toddlers playing and fifteen feet from houses is not safe. Next, meeting federal and Minna standards for safe noise requirements, this highway as planned is encroaching on existing subdivisions and residents. Minna studies show sustained increased noise from highway studies leads to shorter lifespans and heart attacks. We need a safe place to live. This is too close. Avoidance is always better and cheaper than mitigation. The main avoidance is distance, which poses the concerns of why weren't alternate studies done in similar format to what we had in nineteen ninety-five? These alternates were just removed from the website. No study is done. This is what we had in nineteen ninety-five, over two hundred pages to study the alternates before we studied a single route. Why don't we have that this time? How do we make informed decisions if we don't have accurate information? It's a new project with a new purpose. It should be built, it shouldn't be built on thirty-year-old data. Dating back to nineteen ninety-three, they have documentation that land should be preserved and a road built before encroachment happens. It's too late. We haven't approached on that right away. Without data of other routes, how do we know that there aren't better, safer options to meet our needs? The Minna standard, right of way, is a hundred fifty feet. It doesn't exist today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to speak?
Hi, Adam Murphy, twenty-five ten, Fox Hollow Lane. I'm also here to talk about the East Side Corridor and my concern about that development. Current proposed, my endeavor, definitely seems to be a necessary post for existing neighborhoods, kids. Concerned with safety, as we mentioned earlier, sustainability and viability of those neighborhoods to be desirable places for the long term. It just seems like not all the, all the options are considered or fully considered that need to be addressed before making a final decision in our town. So, um, really request that we look at something, uh, for the least, something safer, sustainable, laws for more developments, and a smarter, uh, approach.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak?
Jeff Otto, twenty-four ninety, Fox Hollow Lane. And I'm here to express concerns with the East Side Corridor, specifically the safety and noise concerns, um, where it's supposed to run so close to existing neighborhoods. I was actually at this meeting one year ago, uh, same meeting, same concerns. We get to hear a single, single proposal to address these concerns. It's been a full year. I thought these been offered to address the. Address our concerns, we'll say. And lastly, just wanted to make sure we emphasize that, you know, the two people behind you, they've been doing a lot of the, the work at these meetings and they are representing the whole neighborhood. It's, it's difficult to get here by five o'clock or five fifteen after work. And they do represent a whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Seth Meyer, two-five-five-one, Mossy Creek Drive. And just basically to say the same kinds of things with the East Side Corridor here, just to make sure that everybody understands the awesome dedication of work that, uh, Matt Senate must, uh, deserve and put in. But they're not just the only two voices, uh, down in Winterman neighborhood to the north, grabbing very listening neighbors to the south, the neighbors west across the street and further south as well. All have the exact same feelings. Do we potentially need a East Side Corridor? Yes, but a highway literally in our backyards where there's not enough space left over, that hundred fifty feet of easement, um, does not currently exist. I just think safety is the number one priority. The concern is about, uh, you know, development on the east side, um, foresight and, uh, potential mitigation of sound costs, uh, paying that homeowners for lots of home values, um, lots of things to consider there. So yes, East Side Corridor, please don't put it at Twenty-ninth Avenue location. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Anyone else in the crowd wishing to speak?
So I wanted to go a little bit, uh, different approach on this. Um, I've been, uh, listening to these guys at all the meetings. Bolivar Andrews? Scott Lindberg, uh, four-twenty-two, South Cedar. So I attend the city council and the county commissioner meetings. I've been hearing these stories. Thirty-fourth Street, you guys got a little bit there. I mean, uh, with residential houses. So I live on South Cedar. I bought my house twenty-seven years ago. Twenty-eight years ago, they redid Cedar and widened it. Now our house is probably ten feet from the road. The snowfall comes by thirty miles an hour. If it's a highway, it's going to be going a lot faster. Our, our house gets hit with the snow with it being that close. So if you're talking, the houses are going to be as close as mine is to the streets, that's, that's a danger. I mean, and, you know, just with the traffic going by, we hear it all the time. You know, we were dumb and stupid wondering about that house. If I, if I would have known about that now, I probably would have bought the house. I mean, it's about the pay for it now, but, um, you know, so. I hear what they're saying with the dangers and the, you know, with the houses being so close, even though a lot of them are going to be in the backyards. It's still, you know, the snowfall comes by, it's going to be throwing stuff, you know, into their yards. You know, trucks coming by on there, kids out there playing, it's going to be noisy. So, uh, I hope you're listening to them. You know, every time the election comes around, you guys are always saying, we never get people commenting on things. So I hope you're listening to them because they're here every meeting. And I don't ever hear that you guys have had a meeting with them to talk about it. So I hope you're listening to them and, and move it.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, thank you for your comments. I'm sure Mr. Hill has made notes and, like I said, we wanted you to come to the podium because now they're all recorded, so. Any other comments from the board?
Chair, I have, I received, uh, seven written comments via email, um, up until three fifty-five P M. today, when I came to the first meeting here. So, um, if you'd like, I can read these for the public record too as part of the.
I think that would be good then on public record.
Sure. So I'll step up to the mic too. The first, uh, comment that I received was from Don and Sue Mullenbach, twenty-five thirty-five Mossy Creek Drive. Regrettably, we cannot attend meeting tonight. Please consider using the Thirty-fourth Avenue location for our new road. Our property will be adversely impacted by the Twenty-ninth proposed location as well as our property value and our quality of life. It is a matter of personal safety for us. We would welcome a visit from any of you to actually view the encroachment of the proposed highway. The second, uh, email that I received is from Mark Maslinsky. Hopefully I got that right. Um, he has also included thirty names on here, um, to, as, as part of his correspondence. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. The residents of our neighborhood appreciate your consideration. The new East Side Corridor should not be built at the currently proposed location that would intersect with East Road Street, Fox Hollow Lane and Timberwood Lane. A county highway with a fifty-five mile an hour speed limit intersecting two residential streets, Fox Hollow Lane and Timberwood Lane within a thousand feet is dangerous for children playing in the neighborhood, for the families utilizing the neighborhood streets, and for drivers flying down the highway at fifty-five miles an hour. Intersections of a highway that are so close together will make it difficult for drivers to identify hazards and mitigate accidents. This danger is exponentially escalated by the third intersection within five blocks, East Road Street, which at point of intersection is a forty-five mile an hour highway. Three speed limits and three intersections within five blocks is a recipe for disaster. Erecting it in a residential neighborhood is a recipe for injury and death. That was bullet point one. The second bullet point says, if the new East Side Corridor must be built at this location, please protect the neighborhood residents and those driving on the new highway by eliminating part of the danger. Instead of making it an intersection, please make Fox Hollow Lane a cul-de-sac. In addition, please create a safety barrier between the cul-de-sac and the highway. A five-foot tall berm planted with mature green trees should provide protection, a sound barrier, barrier and aesthetically pleasing backdrop to hide the highway. The next, uh, comment email letter is from Chad Emberton. I don't see his address on here. Says to whom it may concern, I hope this message finds you well. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed East Side Corridor highway. It is important to me that my sentiments are made public. My wife and I have two young children who spend a significant amount of time playing outdoors. The prospect of a highway being constructed in our vicinity raises serious questions for us. We are already apprehensive of our children's safety within the neighborhood and the addition of a potential highway exacerbates these worries. If you have any further inquiries or would like to discuss this matter in more detail, please feel free to reach out to me. I appreciate your consideration and I'm grateful for any efforts to relocate the highway further east from the initially proposed plans. Thank you in advance. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter. The next email is from Ryan Copeland. Good morning. Realize no opinion is optimal, and you will never make everyone happy. Appreciate what you do and for listening. I live in the Country View Development to be upfront, so I have personal concerns about track. I have a larger concern, however. This corridor should be able to link with 14 in the future for long-term usefulness, effectiveness. The Havana access now to 14 is dangerous and will need to be solved for in the future as seen by the accidents at the current crossing. To mean long-term, resources should be directed out to that road to tie in the future needs. Looking at the map, the proposed plan does not appear 14 access would ever be feasible. Going out back a mile or two will only add minutes. The road is in place out by Havana, and it can, it can and is already connected to Highway 14. An East Side bypass corridor should link to 14 to make it truly useful. The homes built in the Country View Development were not provided sufficient setback, and roads were not designed for that kind of access. Planning approved for the actual development in the past does not appear to have ever taken a major corridor into account as some have stated. Rides were approved for future road access in the backyard as an example. Homeowners were told the corridor would not go there, which appears to be supported by the approved layout. Again, appreciate your time. The next one is from Becky Dowley. I want to register my adamant concerns regarding the placement of a new East Side Corridor road. There have been a number of changes in the 20-plus years since this was first brought up as a much less-used road. I understand that neighbors were concerned then about safety, and most of them were not nearly as close to that potential East Side Corridor road as my neighbors and I are today. In those 20-plus years, the North Country neighborhood was built up dramatically. We and our neighbors made decisions to build out here based on feedback that we would not be facing issues with potential future roads being what you're now proposing alongside our neighborhood. Neighborhood is nearly full of homes. It wasn't then. The number of children is substantially higher than it was 20 years ago. While some directions of the city are landlocked, building east is not. We can expect growth to the east. This city should be concerned about safety factors, especially when they are dramatically greater and going to grow. Further, I'm sure that now looking forward 20 years would result in planning to place an East Side Corridor much further east than what you're proposing. And that was Becky Dowley, 960 Country View Avenue. I think I said her address. The next one is from Chelsea and Brian Wendell. Hello. We are very concerned about where you are planning to put the road for East Side Corridor. We have a child with special needs, and thinking about a busy road running on the other side of our street is very concerning to us and his safety. Please reconsider moving the road back further from our neighborhood for the safety of our child and other children in the neighborhood. And the last one is from Brady Beanken. Hello. I currently reside on Stoney Creek Drive, and I feel that the road going directly behind these houses is detrimental to the safety of the children and pets up here. I feel like the road needs to be pushed further east to avoid any accidents that may occur if the road is going to be right in our backyards. I also strongly believe that traffic will not obey the speed limit that this road will be posted at, which increases the likelihood of an accident. I sure hope the city can think about the safety of our current generation of Oatana and realize that saving somebody two minutes to get from 26th Street to the New York High School is not worth someone potentially losing their life. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Scott. Like I said, those are now recorded, so they're on public record as well as everybody else's comments, so. Anything else to add, Greg?
I just want to thank everybody for making their comments known, and.
Yep.
Can we have questions at this point? Or is this, do we need to close?
Quick, yeah, yeah.
So I've heard, heard varying distances on how far on 34th is. Could somebody clarify for the record how far 34th is? I've heard quarter mile, I've heard half mile.
Zero point six miles.
I've heard three quarters. I'll ask the engineer. You clarify, please.
I believe along the road, the street is three-quarter mile from the edge of the North Country Division out to 34th.
Three-quarters of the way out?
On the long road.
Long road, so basically the backyard.
Right. Up on Dane and 26th, I think it gets shorter, but I don't have that.
As it jogs over to the east. I also heard that there has been no meetings stated tonight. It's hard to have meetings when we don't have all the information. We're still waiting for studies. I think that's been, been brought up on a couple of occasions. As much as we would like to have meetings and have further dialogue, there just isn't much to dialogue on, other than continue to hear what you have to say, and you're being heard. I hear what you're saying. There just isn't much that we can, can talk about until we get those studies back. We really, and it could very well be that the study comes back and says it's not even feasible here. We don't know that at this point. So I think until we get that back, it would, it would serve all of us well to just take a breath if possible. I, I understand where you're at. If I lived there, I'd have the same concerns from, and I don't want to say this side because it's not us against your sides. That's not how this works. But I think we need to, we need to figure out what, what the true impacts are and, and approach it from that, that piece. The other concern is, is, and I hear this, that we push it out three-quarters of a mile, and people are going to use it. I talked to people that live in your neighborhood that say they will not use it. I live four blocks from there, and I know I won't drive that much further. I'm even questioning if I would drive out that far to go south? And then I'm hearing that, you know, this is needed, and 34th is going to be needed at some point. And to connect to 14, and with this piece, that's not going to happen. The state isn't going to allow that. So there's just a lot of, a lot of questions that we need to sort out, and a lot of data that we need to get before we can make comments back. It's hard to sit here at public comment and hear what you have to say without being able to dialogue back. This, this allows us that opportunity to have this conversation. I understand there was a meeting the other night, and that went well. I had hoped to be there, but I have a family medical emergency that didn't allow me to be there. Just know that you're being heard, and this is at least from one commissioner, and I believe I speak for the rest, that we're here in what you're saying. The balancing act is, how do you serve the whole population? I get that it's a, it, it, there's, there's an impact. But Greg said there's an impact, no matter where it goes. That's true. I have farmers that live out there that are calling and saying, don't you dare put that out here, because that's going to impact their property. Now that's going to plow through their farmland, and they're going to split parcels. They don't like that. So there's an impact. So no matter where this go, there's, there's, there's going to be, somebody's going to be impacted. What we have to navigate is what's best for the broader population, everybody that we serve. I think where we would all be best served is if we have to put it there, and at the end of the day, that's what we decide, what can we do collectively to soften the blow? Right? And I think it was Maslinsky, maybe one of his bullet points? I think he was spot on. If you have to do it, what can we do? Can there be some sort of berm? Can there be trees? Keep in mind, there's going to be a walking path as a buffer also. And I've been adamant about, if we, if we have to put this thing within this right away, we jam this thing as far east as we can and create as much space as we can between the west side of the road and the property lines. I'm not going to say we're going to acquire more property, because we don't know the cost or the impact that that's going to have. And it's my understanding there's a fiber optic cable that runs underneath there that you can imagine that's hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the comment I heard from some as well, in the grand scheme, it's only a couple hundred thousand. We, we fight for $50, so, you know, I get it. So just know you're being heard. To summarize, just know that you're being heard, and that let's, if we can, let's take a breath until we get these studies back, and then regroup collectively and figure out what we can do.
I just made a comment. That's basically what I emailed you the other day. We've, we've got to get this environmental study back. Like I said, they may say we can't build it there. We don't know. But until we get that study back, that's why we haven't made any responses, because there's no response to make. And that, to me, is fair to all the citizens at that point. We need to get that first study back to find out what the ramifications are, or what the, you know. They may say, no, you need to move it a little further east. And then we have to bite that fiber optic move, which I think it's AT&amp;T that put that in there, and they're not going to move it. We're going to have to pay them. And I think they said that's about $300,000 to move that fiber optic line. So, I mean, you're looking at over a $16 million project right now, I believe is kind of the, you know. Greg has done a good job of getting some federal funding for it. He's applied for another grant for some more funding for it. But, you know, those things all have to be taken into consideration too, and, and so we hear you. We really do. But we can't, our hands are kind of tied at this point too, until we get that first study back to see what, what the environmental, environmental impact is going to be. Say that three times really bad. But, so we hope you understand that we're not leaving you set out there high and dry, but we just have to get that study back before we can make any, any movement or any decisions. Unfortunately, beyond that, there'll probably be an engineering study that has to go in along the way too, so. But with that, is there any other comment for the public hearing tonight?
Can we respond to you guys?
Sure. As a dialogue, we wanted to respond to all.
Yeah. Do you want me to have the microphone or?
Yeah.
Please.
I think our biggest concern is that we don't need answers. We just want to make sure we're heard, and we want to have that conversation in that two-minute forum. Yeah, it allows us to give you two minutes, but that's only the tip of the iceberg of our concerns. We really just want our concerns heard. We would like to have an open conversation with you guys that doesn't say, hey, we're going to move it out of that or we're going to put in a noise wall. We're not looking for those answers. We just want a conversation. We talked about moving the fiber optic and that being $300,000, I think is what was documented. But building a noise wall is $2 million. So there's costs either way, and that's where our perspective is coming from, that yeah, it's $300,000 to move that, but there's also exorbitant costs here, plus the cost of affecting the residents that exist. So if there's any way that we could have that open dialogue, I think that would be a tremendous help for both sides.
Well, I think, I will give our engineer a lot of credit. I think, I think he's done a really good job of answering the questions that you've asked him. I keep reading all of that stuff.
And it's good to know that you're reading that, because.
Oh, yeah.
There's, you know, a whole lot of stuff in there.
It's a lot to read. But I think he's done a really good job of, of answering the questions that you've asked him. And I understand, I wasn't able to be there, but I understand your meeting went really well the other day, and so, I mean, I think we're doing what we can do.
And we had that same conversation with Greg yesterday, that the communication could be significantly better, and it doesn't have to be, we have answers for you, but like, hey, we posted this new map on the website. This is a proposed option. This is not set in stone. Because when it goes up on that website and we see it, it looks to us that he moved one step forward. We have this new plan. We've got this set route. This is what it's going to be. But there's no communication to say that that's not, and we learned last night that that road may not be the final option. It was just one discussed. But without that communication, there's no way for us to know that. So that's the kind of communication I think we're looking for.
Okay. I'm sure he's taking notes.
Yeah, we discussed that last night too. So, I mean, that's the kind of dialogue we're looking for. We're not necessarily looking for this is the dead set, this is what it's going to be. Because we understand that you got to do those reports to know the final answer, but to understand our perspectives too is also important.
Mr. Chair. So where did, I wasn't at the meeting, so that's probably a dumb question, but where did the $2 million noise, noise wall come in?
That is the average cost of a 20-foot noise wall for that distance. I do have documentation of another project similar to that on MINDOT site right now for that price.
So there's a noise study that says we need a noise wall?
No, no, no. If, if we needed a noise wall.
This is if. All right. That helps. I was a little.
Kind of like if you have to move the fiber optic line, it's $300,000.
Got you. All right. Fair enough.
That's it. There's a lot of big ifs in it.
Right.
So, but I think this was a good meeting tonight. I'm glad you came. I'm glad we heard everything you had to say, and now you've, you've heard a little bit of what we've, we, as far as we can go.
Right.
Okay.
Real quick, I just wanted to thank Greg and Scott for reaching out for that meeting yesterday. It was the first time that we were able to sit down and have a two-way dialogue, which we found very helpful. We're still adamant that 29th isn't the right location. Us residents anyway, and we'd like to see 34th, but that meeting was extremely helpful in understanding timelines, understanding what is set in stone, what's not, what's included in the study, what's not. And I just wanted to say thanks for being a part of that, and also, James, for your being there as well, and then Paul, who matters, that, that, all of that. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I will ask for a motion to come out of the public hearing. I think I have to do that. Okay. And a second. Okay. All those in favor, sign the flag, just saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then sign. Motion carries. Okay.
See, where are we at here? We're back to number 23, the chair.
23.
Yep.